Page five, item five is on consent. Page six, item six is on consent. Page seven, we have item seven on consent. Page eight, item eight is on consent. Page nine, we have items nine and ten on consent. Page eleven, we have item number eleven on consent. Page twelve, item number twelve is on consent. Page fourteen, item thirteen is on consent. Page fifteen, item fourteen is on consent. Page sixteen, we have item number fifteen on consent. Page eighteen, items sixteen and seventeen are on consent. Skip over. Looks like to page twenty-five. And we have items forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven on consent. All councilors, Mr. President should have gotten the substitute resolution for item number forty-six. That's for item number forty-six, should have been email. It's by Ms. Dees, Deputy City Clerk. Page twenty-six, we have items forty-eight and forty-nine on consent. And all councilors should have also received the correction to item number forty-nine with the page three correction as noted. Page twenty-seven, we have items fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two on consent. Page twenty-eight, we have items fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, and fifty-seven on consent. Page twenty-nine, we have items fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, and sixty-two on consent. Page thirty, we have items sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, and sixty-six on consent. Please note that item number sixty-seven should be withdrawn and request a P P. Page thirty-one, we have items sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, and seventy-one on consent. Page thirty-two, we have items seventy-two and seventy-three on consent. Page thirty-three, we have items seventy-four and seventy-five on consent. And you have several addendum items, and I think on page three of the addendums, it looks like you have items eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, and eighty-five, as well as eighty-six and eighty-seven on consent. That's on the addendums.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Real quick, I wanted to add items seventy-eight through eighty-one on the addendums, add them to the consent agenda. And I think on one, Mr. Clerk, if you could, that should be the host one instead of five, it should be one.
Oh, which one is that, sir? I'm sorry.
Eighty-one.
This, this president.
Hold on, Counselor. We'll get to some other ones.
Well, wait one second, Counselor. Can you please repeat that? You said on item number eighty.
Eighty-one.
Okay, it should be.
Host one.
Host one?
Yeah, one instead of five.
Okay, host one.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
All right. And then items eighteen and nineteen, the twenty-four and twenty-five as well on the consent agenda.
Eighteen and nineteen.
Twenty-four and twenty-five.
Twenty-four and twenty-five. Seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, and eighty-one.
Okay, all right. Counselor Hoyt here. You're good with that, or you had some?
Yeah, well, I was trying to, you know, I'm having to go in between emails to try to figure out, can he show, can he share that, those amendments, I mean, the addendum item?
Sure, we can ask Cody, but you have them on your computer.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, I, I got the, the original agenda pulled up on, on my phone, and I'm on the iPad, and I'm just trying, because any time I go out of this, the, the agenda for the day, it, I have to go back in and start all over again.
You see it right now, there you go, right there.
Okay, very good.
Okay, all righty, so, everybody else good with the consent agenda?
Can we read through it one more time to make sure we have all of them down, since we have such a long list of addenda?
Sure. I got it. All right. Items that are on consent, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen added, nineteen added, twenty-one, page twenty-one, we have twenty-four and twenty-five added to consent. Then we skip over to page twenty-five, and we have forty-five through forty-seven with the substitute item for item forty-six. Page twenty-six, we have items forty-eight and forty-nine with the change to item forty-nine, the correction. Page twenty-seven, we have fifty through fifty-two, twenty-eight, fifty-three through fifty-seven, twenty-nine, fifty-eight through sixty-two, thirty, we have sixty-three through sixty-six, sixty-seven being withdrawn, thirty-one, we have sixty-eight through seventy-one. Said, page thirty-two, we have items seventy-two and seventy-three. Page thirty-three, we have items seventy-four and seventy-five. And then on the addendum, addendums, we have items seventy-eight, seventy-nine added. Page two of the addendums, we have eighty and eighty-one added with the correction of one instead of five on the host. And then on page three of the addendums, we have items eighty-two through eighty-five on consent. And on the second addendum that we sent out, we have items eighty-six and eighty-seven on consent.
Okay, I think I got that. I did want to ask a question, Mr. President.
Madam Chair, I mean, go ahead and ask your question, but the President stepped away for a minute.
Okay, on page twenty-two, item twenty-six, that was withdrawn from the budget and finance agenda yesterday, and so I assume that item twenty-six is withdrawn from the council agenda today. But we need to hear from the appropriate party.
Yes, Councilman Abbott, we would like to withdraw item number twenty-six.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Clerk, item twenty-six withdrawn. All right, any other councilors have any items you would like to either add or remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. This is Valerie again.
Yes, Ms. Abbott.
Did we place items twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two on consent?
No, ma'am.
No.
Well, I'd like to do that.
So what are those items, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two?
One is fire station improvements and a community safe room in South Sherman Heights. And, you know, these don't seem controversial to me.
All right. Do you have any objections? We can add item twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. All right, Mr. Clerk, we'll add those. Any other councilors, if that's all of your list, Ms. Abbott?
Well, what about twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five on page twenty-one?
Yes, because twenty-three, twenty-four is a discretionary, and twenty-three, if that's okay with the council, we could add those, twenty-three and twenty-four.
And twenty-five.
I'd like to, I'd like to not add twenty-three if at all possible.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, that's fine.
I'm just asking.
Or twenty-five. So that's twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five. You got that, Mr. Clerk? Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, that's all. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. Any other councilors have any items you'd like to add or remove to consent? A hearing, none. Do I need to read the statement first, or we go for the vote, Mr. Clerk?
No, the hearing, because we might have a couple of hearings included in the consent, so, yeah, you need to read the statement.
Okay. All right. Let me just get to it on my iPad, I'm sorry. All right, all, all items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation, which are indicated with the P, will be read. Other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Do I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Williams, Councilmember Abbott. Voting starts now. Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman. Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President Potem Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Parker. Okay, is that, did you get Hill? I did. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So those consent items pass. If you'll please call up and read item number one.
Item one. Item one. A public show cause hearing to consider the matter of revoking the business license issued to Club Euphoria, Euphoria Sports Bar and Hookah Lounge, Seven Fifteenth Street West, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two oh eight, to consider rescinding Resolution Number twenty-three ninety-nine dash eighteen, granting approval for a lounge retail liquor class one license approved on November the thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. This is a public hearing item. Any persons who wish to speak for or against this item may do so by joining the meeting of the full council using the link provided below. Please use the hand raised function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. Audio conference number is one four one five six five five zero 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 two. The ASX code is one eight seven two seven zero zero one zero four. If you are calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this agenda item. Need a motion on the item, please.
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. This is neutral right now to this point, so the item is before you go, so that you can discuss and make a decision on it.
All right, so we'll turn this over to Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams, we conduct our public hearing, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Potem. At this time, we're going to first start off with either the Law Department or Birmingham Police to just introduce. So do we have the Law Department on? And then this is kind of, I know we do have a lot of people on for this, so this is kind of what we're going to do. After it's introduced by a member of the administration, whether it be the Law Department or BPD, then we're going to hear from the owners of Euphoria, and then we will hear from members of the public. After that time, BPD will have a chance to speak to factual events that have occurred during calls there, as well as I will read off different reports that we have that have been gathered through BPD. So with that being said, do we have the Law Department or BPD to introduce this item?
Yes, Counselor Williams, we have Attorney Julie Bernard on behalf of the City Attorney's Office, as well as some BPD lieutenants are on the web.
Okay, great. If y'all will start, and just remember, our BPD folks, this, we'll, we'll have a chance for y'all to give specifics about, about, about the location. This is just an introduction, so whoever wants to start, have at it.
Counselor Williams, I, with Attorney King's, you know, okay, I will go ahead. This is a request to revoke the business license of a business that is licensed as Euphoria Sports Bar and Hookah Lounge LLC, which is located at number seven Fifteenth Street West. On, this request came in due to a shooting that resulted in one young death a couple of weeks ago. I believe it was on, on June thirteenth, and it was requested to bring this for a hearing to the council. And so the council has set the hearing, and you are correct, we would proceed hearing from, from the police and the public and the licensee.
All right, thank you, Attorney Bernard, is the owner or operator of Euphoria on the line? Where y'all can get them on virtual meeting?
Hello, I'm Christian Rice, along with Vicky Braden Seals, and we are counsel for Euphoria. So do you just want us to go through a brief?
Yeah, just, yeah, just go, yeah, go, go ahead.
Just introduction. Okay, so, Euphoria Bar and Lounge is owned by Morris, who is currently has that in Business Administration. He helps his father with his car lot, his junkyard, and alabadi and furniture store. Giving you a little background, Morris, because I would like to know that this is a businessman who is willing and looking forward to working with the council on this issue and matter. What we are, they is that you postpone revoking his license and give us an opportunity with you all to work on a safety plan. We've already started discussing the current safety plan and addressing the issues. The issue at hand right now, and I want to go ahead and speak on it, is the death of a young lady. I do want the council to know that the young lady did not die on the property. She was about two to three miles away from the property, but was leaving in the event. At that event, is, it's one of the many events that Euphoria has hosted this year alone. They've posted over twenty concerts with artists who normally people in Birmingham probably wouldn't have access to, such as DC Young Fly, Just Hilarious, amongst other concerts, and nothing of this manner has happened. What we are seeing as an issue with this, as well as one prior before in twenty nineteen, is local artists have become an issue, only because being from the city of Birmingham, people know exactly who you are and where you're located. So if you have a performance in your local artist, if you have any problems with anyone in the city of Birmingham, they know exactly where to pinpoint you. On this particular night, we had more mainstream artists, which was Key Glock, and a local artist, Lil Bam. And the reason why this local artist was put on display is because Morris believed in giving people in Birmingham an opportunity to show their talents. This is one of the many times that Euphoria has posted something in this manner. They posted that school, they handle vendor relations on Sunday, where vendors and business owners are able to display what their, what their businesses have and sell their items. So this is nothing new for Morris, as he likes to provide the opportunity for the citizens. Unfortunately, this particular artist has shown to have some issues within the city of Birmingham. This is the third time that they've run into an issue, so we think that this particular issue is only equivalent to this one instance. So we are asking for a ninety-day intervention to come in, review our security. I do want to let the council know that we do have support from a few of the Birmingham Police Department, because they are patrons of Euphoria, they do come and visit, and their presence is there, but we would like to have more Birmingham Police presence there. And with this ninety-day extension, halfway between, we want to meet again with the Public Safety Council to review anything that we can improve on, or to see if this new plan that we are putting in place is working. Because at the end of the day, like I said, this is a business that is Birmingham, that offers Birmingham opportunities that they normally wouldn't have. And we are looking more for a solution, more so than a second chance. And we're willing to work with making this happen, instead of a full-blown revocation of Mr. Morris license. Do you have anything? I think.
Okay, is that, is that everything for you guys?
Yes.
Okay, great. If you will stay on, we will now hear from members of the public. So I don't know how we're going to organize and what order, but if we have anybody from the Neighborhood Association, I would suggest that we let them go first, and then we can hear from any other member of the public. And this is, and this is for people that, I'm sorry, didn't specify. This is for people that are in support of leaving Club Euphoria open. So all those in favor of, of leaving Club Euphoria open, now is your time to speak. So can we have the first person that is in favor of leaving Club Euphoria open?
Counselor, we have several people who have dialed in on the phone, so we are not able to identify. They are, but I'm going to unmute the first caller now, if that caller could identify yourself.
That's fine, we'll just hear from the public as a whole then.
Oh. Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you? If you'll state your name and address, please, and you have.
Yeah, my name is, my name is Carl Chapell, that's C H A P P E L L. And my address is fifteen twenty First Avenue West at three five two oh eight. So I'm approximately a block and a half away from the club. This has been my residence since nineteen fifty-two. And I am not opposed, I am very opposed to that club. Very opposed to it. I have dialed the police on numerous occasions about the club. The loud music and the patrons urinating in the yard, blocking the driveway, doing popping wheelies in the middle of the street. And I'm aware that Birmingham Police is down there, because I work with West Precinct very closely about other issues. And they have kind of lost control of it down there. I mean, whenever you got people racing up and down the First Avenue West, and the average age of the people here are sixty to seventy years old, that's not good. Particularly between one and three AM, it's highly inappropriate. So I am thumbs down on granting any leeway, ninety, ninety days, whatever the attorney is saying. She's being paid to say that, I'm not being paid to say anything. I live here, and I'm very upset about it. And we are all relatives just about, and we have people here with health issues. As you well know, COVID has, has done great harm to people my age and above. And now we have to cope, deal with the loud music and the inappropriate behavior of the patrons to that club, and that's just asking too much of this neighborhood, and I'm opposed to it. And I go on record with the nine-one-one calls and dealing with it directly with the police, with my dissatisfaction with being up at one, two, three o'clock in the morning, and that's just too much for us to take. And that's all I have to say about it. I talked to Mr. Hoyt about this earlier, when they, the lawyer has misrepresented, there have been other murders down there. And you can check the records to be, be, to be accurate about it, and I actually spoke with the mayor about it. So I've been quite vocal in my opposition of this club, because there are a lot of citizens that can't speak for themselves because of their illness and age. So that's all I have to say about it, sir.
All right, thank you, sir, we appreciate your time. Who do we have next?
We have another caller, Counselor, I'm going to unmute them now.
Good morning, if you'll state your name and address, please.
I'm not actually, I don't live in the neighborhood, I just tapped in after. But my name is Brittany, and I am a small business owner that actually set up there for a pop-up shop, I was a vendor. Just wanted to start off by saying, I felt like he was on to something when we, you know, when we came through the door. I loved the vibe, I got peace when I walked in, I felt safe when I walked in, and as a vendor there, I can't say that I felt harmed at any, at any time. But when running a business, you know, you're learning and you're growing daily. So I'm sure this is a listen learn, and I feel that enforcing the security definitely would help the situation, but it is a place for us to go and set up to network, just to have a good time. And as they say, concerts, I actually was planning on attending a concert, but he set up, and I feel like his mindset, the whole time just watching him, as a businessman, I felt like he was very organized. And to me, he was, you know, watching every which an area that he could and helping out where he could. But, you know, you just, you, you can't, though, I feel like this is, this is a situation, you can't predict these things are going to happen. I agree that law enforcement should be enforced, though.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, who do we have next?
We have another person who has called in on the phone, I'm going to unmute them now.
Hello?
Good morning, how are you doing? If you'll state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, how are you? My name is Justin, live at sixteen twenty forty-fourth Street in Enslie. So I stay pretty close, you know, to the, you know, to the lounge, and I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit, you know, upset, because I stay in the area like Enslie, where, you know, I see racing all up and down Bismarck Superhighway, you know, all the time. I tend Euphoria a lot. I'm also, you know, someone that has cultivated, you know, some of the pop-up shops that we're hearing about, some of the local vending events, creative artist events, and, you know, networking events that, you know, many people have spoken about. Euphoria since its grand opening has been the number one spot for local vending events, for local creatives and entertainers to come in and be able to use their space, you know, to showcase their talents, showcase their products, network, and be able to build connections without, you know, I mean, throughout people within the city. And so, you know, us being able to come in and use the spot, it started off, I believe, as a, an empty lot, but if you come over there now, you know, through the vision of Morris, it's turned into something, you know, beautiful that's been built, you know, by the hands of people within the community, where he has allowed people to come in and, you know, express their talents and dreams throughout his vision. And so I say all of that to say, you know, there are maybe races going on over there. You know, I see people racing up and down Third Avenue, you know, shooting as well. And so, you know, when we talk about shutting, you know, down a spot because of, you know, outside people, you know, we may as well shut down Third Avenue, shut down Bismarck Superhighway, you know, shut, shut down a couple, you know, of these other spots, if, if we're going to blame the ownership for how people on the outside come in and act. I know that he didn't create the spot, you know, for people to come in and act up. He created it so that they can come in and showcase their talent and have a place, a safe place, where they can come and have fun and relax at a hookah lounge. So just want to stress that it's not a nightclub. This is the number one spot in the city since grand opening for local business, networking, and building connections throughout the city. I just want to say thank him, and we hope, you know, the best for Euphoria, so that we can continue this dream and this vision that he has for the west side of Birmingham, and also that he has allowed us to create and partner with him as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Who do we have next, Ms. Bernard?
The next person that I have on the list, her name is Nicole, you are unmuted now.
Good morning, Nicole, if you'll state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hey, how you doing?
Good, how are you? If you'll state your name and address, you have three minutes.
And I stay at fifteen twenty Long Avenue, I'm actually right across the street.
All right, you have three. All right, you have three minutes.
I hear him. Okay. I never had a problem out of the club. I slept on my street. My driveway has never been blocked. I never had nobody living in my yard. First a lot of music on twelve o'clock in the afternoon.
Sir, we're having trouble here. Is any way you can um, speak closer to your computer or, or more into the phone or however? Barely. No, sir, we cannot.
It appears that that speaker has uh, disconnected. I will go ahead and unmute the next speaker, uh, Costella Adams Terrell.
Uh, good morning, everyone.
Good morning. You'll state your name and address and you have three minutes, please.
Okay. My name is Costella Adams Terrell. I am president of the Rising West Preston Neighborhood. Uh, my address is one five zero four First Avenue West, which is uh, roughly about a block and a half. Uh, Mr. Chapell who spoke earlier is just a few doors down from me. Now, uh, in this neighborhood, as he said, is a lot of elderly people. However, I spoke with the manager Denise a few days ago. She came by my house and she showed me some of the things that they do at the, at uh, Euphoria and everything. Our concern is the volumes, the lack of communication with the neighborhood and neighborhood leadership. We don't know when anything is going on over there. And I was shown that, oh yes, place posted on Facebook. Well, everybody's not on Facebook. So they don't notify the neighborhood of anything and then we have our driveways blocked. These people are parking on our grass. There's loud, the music is so loud, it rattles my windows. And I spoke to her about this last week when she came by my house because I feel like it's totally inappropriate. It's totally unfair to the people in this community. I don't know why they chose that spot because uh, it's, it's not a spot for a senior neighborhood that we have. I realize that it's across the street and, and, and up at a corner, but the volume is so loud, it rattles my windows on First Avenue. You know, and I said that to her. Now, we need to have some sort of, I'm sorry. We need to have some sort of resolution on the, the music, the parking, the disruption of the traffic. When they decide they want to block off Fifteenth Street, they do cars three deep and they block off the whole block. The police can tell you about that. They've had to have a move more than once. So, and the killing as uh, one of the other uh, patrons said, I mean, neighborhood people said, uh, we live over here, so this is not the first time it happened. The first time was right after they first opened, the first summer that they opened. And I'm sure that's of record too. So, I mean, I hate to shut down anybody, but I feel like if you're gonna be so disrespectful and so disruptive in a community like this, then we don't need you in our community. I'm just gonna put it that way. Because you don't, you don't communicate with the community. You communicate with people coming from all over on other parts of the city. They're coming in to set up their vendor uh, spots and stuff and we don't know anything about what's going over there until everything is blocked off and I come home from work and I can't get to my driveway because they blocked, they blocked the street. I've actually had people try to park in my driveway. And so uh, it's totally up to, you know, everyone to decide what the final outcome is. But for me, as a representative of this community, I've talked to several of our neighbors and many of these people are just not in favor of this continuing. If they can bring the music tone down, then uh, maybe they can continue something, you know, on, on some level, but uh, and then the other thing the young lady said to me that the manager said is that they have people that's eighteen, that's, that, that ages eighteen and older. Well, if you have a liquor license, then you should not be serving eighteen-year-olds. That's against the law. So I'm just sharing with the conversation I had with the manager last week as well as the input that I've had from my neighbors around here. And they're saying they moved to their back bedrooms because they can't sleep in the front and they have normal bedrooms at the front of the house because of the volume of the noise. And I'm, I'm done. No, no, I'm done. So.
Ma'am, I appreciate that, your comments and also thank you for your representation um, as a neighborhood officer. Uh, Kim, who do we have next?
We have another person who has called in on the phone. They are now unmuted.
All right. If, good morning. If you'll state your name and address, please, and you have three minutes. Good morning.
Hello, good morning. How are you?
Doing well. If you'll state your name and address, please, and you have three minutes.
Homer Logan, fourteen oh nine First Avenue West. I um, I hope everybody's listening. I, I'm, I'm, I'm happy when people open up businesses and they do what they say their business is established for. A hookah lounge, hookah lounge to me, I've been to some. They're chilled, TVs, music is at a minimum. Everybody's having a good time and it's not this overcrowding of people. I feel like this place was open with that intention, but over time they got real famous and it became a nightclub. This nightclub traffic is all in front of my house. Every chicken box, every fish box, every cigarillo piece of paper, everything that they have. They drop it in front of your house. They double park. I just had to call the police the night the shooting happened with the concert because two people decided they want to park in my backyard. Police asked me, were they in the alley? I said, no, they're physically in my backyard. When the police pulled up, he had to run off because the shooting began and there comes several hundreds of people running back toward this way. My issue is the music. All I hear all night long, boom, 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 just rattling my house. The unknown shootings that happen from people just leaving the club, all the peeling off. Just spring edition of Magic City Classic, motorcycles came up First Avenue. Groups of Camaros came up Lum. What's gonna happen when the paramedics need to get through the streets? But you got all these crazy people I hear who just want to have a good time 'cause that's all they got in mind. But the good time can turn very serious. We have a lot of woodhouses over here. We have a lot of elderly people. You got working people like me. Tuesday night, they don't get started till after midnight. Now, I do travel and I do go places, so weekends is not bad, but when I want to come home, I want to get in my driveway. I don't want to see people on my, on my yard. I don't want to see your trash. They don't even come up here and pick trash up. They need to come all over this area. But my thing is, I'm opposed, I'm opposed to it because all of that could just start to mess in front of somebody's house. Unknown shootings can happen. Like I say, a lot of peeling off goes down. It's just a mess and I, I really don't like it. I don't like to shut people down either. But that's a nightclub. That's not a hookah lounge. That's a nightclub and it brings people from everywhere. We get all this noise. We can't sleep. Kids can't play in the yard during the day. And I go back to that spring edition of Magic City Classic, the police had to come over here and shut it down because they took over the community. They took over it. Music coming up the road, boom, 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 boom. People standing out in front of your house. You tell them to turn the music down. They don't want to turn it down. You know, it's almost like you got to stand outside with your pistol 'cause you don't know what's gonna go down from the people that are seeing that club. They are not contained. It is outrageous. It is too much for this neighborhood. They take over. They leave everything that you could possibly imagine on the ground. The noise, the trash, the unknown things that could happen from that public that participates in that club. It's just dangerous looking. It's not safe to me. I don't like it. I'm not gonna blame it on the club owners. It's your patrons. Your patrons are out of order. They are disrespectful and we don't want that over here. And I feel like if y'all lived over here and y'all felt what we felt, you wouldn't want it either.
All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time. Uh, Kim, who do we have next?
We have another caller who I have unmuted now.
All right. Great. How are you doing? If you'll state your name and address and you have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Dominic Ruffin and I stay at fifteen twenty Long Avenue. I'm actually right across the street from the club. Now, I don't understand how the other residents have had their driveway blocked because mine is not blocked. Mine has never been blocked. I never had trash in my yard. As far as the music go, I hear loud music, one o'clock in the afternoon, two o'clock in the afternoon, even when the club is not open. You can't really put the music on the club because people pass up and down Long Avenue with systems in their cars, racing and stuff like that. That's not necessarily the club. They do it all times of the day to the point where Birmingham PD has actually had their tech unit posted up on Long Avenue to catch those offenders. So you can't really put all the public traffic on that club. I never had a problem out of the club. I never had trash in my yard. If somebody did park in my yard, they were respectful when I said, hey, you're blocking my driveway. Oh, I'm sorry, sir. I was just trying to go across the street. I don't understand how the other people in the community are having problems out of their patience and I stay right across the street from the club and I don't have those problems. So I'm not, I, I, I'm all for Euphoria staying open because I feel like it's a positive thing. It's a good vibe. Uh, giving young people and, and other people the opportunity to, to be business people. You know, they have pop-up shops there on Sunday and, you know, it'd be crowded and, and I feel like that's a good positive thing for the community. If people want to shut down Euphoria, we need to shut down Birmingham then 'cause you have shootings at the Shell gas station. There's another club right behind my house, a few blocks back. They're, they'd have had, they open like two days out of the week and they'd have had ten times as many incidents as this club they had in two years. To my understanding, per the news, they only had two incidents in two years. Okay, the club behind my house, they have had at least twenty in the past two years, but yet nobody's talking about pulling their license. The Shell gas station on Third, people, you know, if I want to get gas, the pumps block. People got music playing, people hanging out. Nobody talk about pulling their license. Hong Kong, right up the street, loud music, shoes. Nobody talk about pulling their license. So I feel like Euphoria need to be open or we just need to shut Birmingham down. And that's my concern.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, Kim, who do?
It appears that the person who was on before who got disconnected is back again. This is Nicole.
Yes, um, my name is Nicole. Um, I actually live in Hoover. Um, I'm at the club every weekend. I have a business. I'm vending here. I've seen several people come out here, network, meet several people that they have, may have never met. Um, you, the man mentioned earlier that there have been several shootings up here. I don't know if y'all just not really looking into and actually finding out what's really going on. But y'all, that is really false information. Second of all, we never served anybody that was eighteen liquor. Um, that's also false. Um, I just don't understand, not even that. The music is not even loud. Like unless you're inside of the club, you can't even hear the music. Um, also you can't put parking on the club. We can't tell people where to park. At that point, if you don't want people parking in your yard, just block it off. I feel like it's a lot of false information that's going on and people not willing to actually look and figure out what's really going on. And I feel like that's just unfair. And like the man mentioned earlier, there are several other clubs in Birmingham that are still open that have been shot up and they have not came before in a meeting to fight for their club. And not even that, um, social media saying the girl got shot. It was even an article where the boyfriend stated the girl got shot, um, not at Euphoria. So I feel like the man said, if you gonna shut one thing down, y'all need to shut the whole Birmingham down. Because at this point, you closing a place that has gave several people in the community the opportunity to showcase their business, their talent and he has been doing this ever since he's opened his club. So if you're gonna take that away from the community, that is really just unfair.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Kim, who do we have next?
We have another person who has called in on the phone who I have unmuted now.
All right. If you'll state your name and address, you have three minutes. Good morning. Can you hear us? All right, Kim, let's go to the next person.
All right. Next we have Carlos. You are unmuted now.
All right. Good morning. If you'll state your name and address, you have three minutes.
Yes, uh, Carlos Shavers Junior. Uh, hello, counselors and community. Hope everybody is well this morning. Um, it's pretty simple. Um, you know, things happen all over the city. When something happened at Onyx, uh, we worked as a community to uh, make sure that Onyx had the proper safety plans needed to better make sure that they could serve our community. Um, Euphoria, Euphoria is a phenomenal place. They, they do a lot of great things. As been mentioned before, they uh, make sure that so many entrepreneurs in the city has an opportunity to really uh, really, one, make money, uh, put themselves out there as businesses and really just showcase the talents that they have. And again, things happen every single place in Birmingham. Now, uh, when it comes to accountability, I just want to see this, this establishment, you know, make sure that they have a proper uh, safety plan in place, just as the city has given other entities the same, uh, the same opportunity. Uh, this entity deserves the same opportunity to be able to provide the city an, an opportunity to provide a safety plan to the city to show that, yes, this happened, but this is how we will do better. This is how we, as the organization, as a business, will do things better for, for our community. Uh, and if that is done, I believe that the council should really work to save this black business. Uh, I know Hunter Williams, you like to jump and close down businesses, but this is a black business and uh, we, there's, they, just like everybody, they've dealt with this pandemic too and they deserve a chance to, to thrive just like anyone else. And I'm asking this council to give them this opportunity, allow them to show you a safety plan and allow them to really be here for our community as they have. And, and, and just really work to make sure that other businesses, just like this one, have the same proper safety plan. If we have these safety plans in place, then when things do happen, then we'll, we'll be able to look back on that. But if we don't make sure that these businesses have proper safety plans, then when something happens, you can't fault the business because the city didn't do its due diligence. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And just to clarify a comment, in our four years on the council, we've shut down two businesses after gruesome homicides. All right, Kim, who's next?
Next we have Marquita. You are unmuted now.
Hey, I'm Marquita. I'm, um, I'm a resident in Hoover, but I do visit Euphoria on several occasions, um, more on Sundays. I'm a um, vendor and I'm very thankful for Euphoria for um, opening the doors and giving chances to small businesses to um, showcase their business and their um, products and even talent there. Um, a lot of people in the Birmingham community doesn't do that. Um, and I think that's very important and it needs to really go on a lot more places to give young people and just everybody um, opportunities to do something because as we see that if they don't have anything to do, uh, we can turn on the news or uh, media and see what's going on. I agree um, with Carlos that Euphoria should be granted what they're asking for, the ninety days to prove that they have a safety plan in place. When I'm attending Euphoria at, whether it's a concert or a pop-up shop or whatever the case may be, um, I always go through the front gate. It's always security there. They're checking purses, they're checking bags. Um, I was even impressed when I did a pop-up shop, um, I was outside towards the back where there is a back gate. There was also security there controlling that, locking that. If someone tried to get in, security was there to stop it. So I feel like the safety is there at the clubs, but as we see in the city of Birmingham and just everywhere these days, like we have polices out and about all the time, but there's still killings. Um, so, I mean, you can't, you can control the controllable. Some things are out of your control. So if Euphoria is, they can control the controllables, which is in their control, then I'm just asking for them to get the ninety days they're requesting to um, show that they can continue or provide better safety or whatever um, they need to do to keep their doors open. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Kim, who do we have next?
We do have one more caller who is unmuted now. We do have one more caller who is unmuted now.
All right. Good morning. If you'll state your name and address, you have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Stefan Lewis. I'm currently at fifteen oh one First Avenue West. Um, I'm concerned about, as my, um, president stated, of neighborhood, about some type of resolution. I'm not for impeding good black business, but we have concerns in this community. We live here. We have concerns in this community about the loud noise. It's there. It's evident. Also, the city of Birmingham has even a code of, uh, people having loud music as well. So we want them to do this. We want them to get with the community at hand. Make some type of resolution that we all can live with. As they stated, the people that live here knows this. We already know the, the situation that they're trying to do and I, I don't want to impede anybody's progress. But we live here in the community. We want some type of resolution where we both can live here and see them thrive as well. That's my opinion. I think the ninety days would be perfect if they are to, um, get with the community leaders here and make some type of resolution about the complaints that we have. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Kim, who do we have next?
The display name of our next, uh, speaker is B. Farrington eighty-five. You're unmuted now.
My name is Brittany Farrington. I'm a patron of Euphoria. Um, not just a patron, I'm a small business and I'm also an entrepreneur that this has opened up a lot of opportunities. I just want to continue what two previous callers had said. I understand the safety concern, but I'm not understanding why he's being held and this club is being held to a different standard than every other business in Birmingham. If they got a safety plan or the ninety days to show, they could show just like any other business. The McDonald's around the corner has had killings. The clubs around the corner have killings. And all these people are given these opportunities. These people are saying that their driveways and things all are not controlled by him. Give him an opportunity, like she said, to control the things that he can control. Uh, cause he's helping a lot of other people, the things that are not being spoken, the things that he is controlling, they're helping not just that community, but people that aren't even residents of the community. You don't know how many vendors, artists, that club has helped get into a position to help feed their families or take care of themselves. And I just don't think it's fair that he's not being given the same opportunities and chances that everyone else is. When it's a safety to walk in, shit, like it's a safety hazard, like it's, you're more safe at Euphoria than you are on Third Avenue. So if we're not gonna shut down every business in Birmingham, why shut him down?
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, who do we have next, Kim?
We have another person who has called in. You are unmuted now.
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm far, I'm on a different, uh, resolution number. I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. If you'll just stay on. Kim, who do we have next?
Um, another person who has called in. You are unmuted now.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
If you'll state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Antoine Jackson and, um, I'm a one of the entertainers here at Euphoria. I must say the establishment is, have been nothing but a great platform for me and my, my brother. We're both from Mobile, Alabama, pursuing a radio career and Euphoria have been this platform for us. And I can say for many, for a couple of years that this establishment have been open, I have watched this young man really open up his, his platform to people, whether he was a, a vendor doing pop-up shops, a artist, or you just wanted, you know, just to be good and just have a platform to, just to put anything out, he had that table for you. I have watched this man literally give back book bags, bikes, take homeless people from under the bridge to come up in his club to clean up, to make sure that this place stayed clean and safe. Now, we can't control what happens outside, uh, outside this establishment, but we would do our best to do what's right. One thing I love about this young man right here, he's a community-oriented person. He's willing to be the solution for the problem. If you close down the solution, how are we going to solve the solution? So I'm, I'm asking you guys, please have this young man some grace. He's a, he's a good person. He has people coming out of town to come experience the Magic City. This city is known for, for magic and this city is a great city and I want people, when they come to you, uh, to Euphoria, when they come to Birmingham, that they have that Magic City touch. They have that Magic City feeling. Don't shut down Euphoria because you shutting down the Magic City.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, Kim, who do we have next?
The next person has the display name Kenny. You are unmuted now.
Yeah, yeah, doing.
Good morning, man. You have, uh, if you'll state your name and address, you got three minutes.
Uh, name is Kenny. Uh, address fifty-five hundred Meyer Madison Boulevard. Uh, I just wanted to say, shutting down Euphoria is really, it's, it's kind of crazy for me. I'm a recent college graduate. So this venue has opened up opportunities for the, my generation to come out, you know, and be entrepreneurs, be able to set up our business, be able to set up just different things to try, you know, with, with our generation, it's kind of hard for us to get opportunities just due to the fact of lack of experience, but yet we got somebody in another generation that's willing to let us experience these different things and let us experience trying new businesses in his venue. So I, one, I would like to say that. Two, for his safety, we speaking a lot on shutting the club down due to safety due to shootings and et cetera, but we're not speaking about how we're gonna control our community. Our community is the issue. How can we punish a club for something the community continues to do? We can't say it's, it's the, it's the club fault when the community is the people that's coming out acting up. So my question would be more so, how can we get the community to come together and be safe and have a good time and enjoy theirselves? He provided nothing but an experience. He had his police. Anytime he comes to Euphoria, you see those blue lights on and they're on for safety. They're on to let you know that we are a secure location. Every time you come to Euphoria, you get pat down head to toe to know that you're in a secure location with security. It's ample of security, ample of police, but you can't control what the community want to do. We sit, like I said, we sit here and we discuss how much we should shut down Euphoria because it's bringing in a, a crazy crowd. We're not talking about how we can, why is our crowd crazy? Why, why are the people in this area not just going to Euphoria, but in Birmingham trying to kill and shoot each other and not going out trying to have fun? Uh, to me is the real question, not shutting down a man who really opened up opportunity for businesses across the state of Alabama and further. People come to Euphoria for an experience and they get there every time. And for us, the people that's complaining about things being in their yard and et cetera, you know, I, he, that, that's never his intention to hurt anybody, to invade anybody's privacy, anything like that. But I do know he got the utmost great intentions for is keeping his community alive and keeping them in a safe environment where they can still experience fun. We don't have that no more. And that was probably the only location, but that all, that's all I really had to say.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, Kim, who do we have next?
We have another call-in user who has now been unmuted.
All right. Good morning. If you'll state your name and address, you have three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello?
Good morning. If you'll state your name and address, you have three minutes.
All right. This is Alpine Fins. Man, I'm on the west side of Birmingham. Uh, as far as the club, Euphoria, I have seen this club grow since day one. I've been here. I'm a videographer and I, I watched it grow. As far as the community, Euphoria most definitely gives back to the community as far as book bags arrive. Anything for the school. We even had events as far as put your guns down, work guns up. We do a lot of different events. And as far as, I know a lot of the residents speaking on music and, uh, parking. I'm pretty sure if you come to, come down, we'll, uh, get that situated, you know, we'll get that, uh, figured out, you know? It is no problem, no issue with that. But as far as music, I mean, I don't think the music is so loud because I know when I pull up, I don't hear it like that. You actually have to be inside, you know, to understand and feel, you know, it's music, the vibration, you know, but I understand. So like I said, I just wanted to, uh, call on behalf of Club Euphoria because I know, uh, y'all, uh, all hear about the incidents. As far as security wise, I've been here since day one and I get pat down. So, I mean, I feel like it's plenty of security. I feel like it's plenty of security, plenty of Birmingham police officers that come down to the community and, you know, and as far as, like I said, community give back, he brings back plenty of jobs as far as pop-up shops. He give many people in the, uh, community to come down and explore their businesses. So that's all I have to say about that. All right.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, Kim, who do we have next?
Uh, the next person is, uh, the display name is Nikki J. Uh, you're unmuted now.
Good morning. Yeah.
Good morning.
If you'll state your name and address, you have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Nikali Jackson. Um, I stay in five thirty five page, um, around, not too far from the cliff. Um, I'm actually a bartender, um, that works here. Um, and I just wanted to put some insight on a few things. This job has yet alone just changed my entire life. Um, and I wanted people to understand like what Euphoria was meant for. Um, it had given me opportunities to pay for school. I graduated from the University of Alabama at Birmingham. And not only me, it has benefited a lot of, um, employees that are here. Um, I'm also an artist, so it has given me a platform to perform my music, um, and get, get it heard everywhere. Um, originally I'm from Atlanta, so I have family members who have come from Atlanta just to see what Euphoria is about. Um, we're really positive here. We try to make sure that we communicate with the community to see anything they want to see here. We've had, uh, donation drives. We have Christmas drives. We had drives for children to come in and get stuff for school. I know COVID was a hard time for a lot of families around in this area. Um, so we put that opportunity out for others to come and see what Euphoria is about. Um, we've had pop-up shops every Sunday. People have experienced and expanded their business only because Euphoria gave them the platform. Um, so I don't want to take the insight of who, uh, Morris really is because he is an amazing person. Um, and he's giving his employees and even DJs opportunities to come and showcase their talent. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that the council understands not only what Euphoria brings, but what it has done for people around this, in this community. And I'm pretty sure we'll be happy and glad to work with the community to make a better difference and to actually listen to them and see what they want us to do to better not only Euphoria, but the community as a whole. And that's really what Euphoria is for. Um, so I just want to make sure that you guys, um, as, as a council, actually listen to the positive things and not the negative, negativity, because it hasn't been a lot of negativity since we've been open. And I've been here two years. So this was just a little bump in the road that we want to fix and work with you all so that we can better the community as well as better this place. Um, so thank you so much for allowing me to talk this morning and I have, I hope you all have a wonderful rest of y'all today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Uh, Kim, who do we have next?
Counselor, that, uh, is the, the last of the list. That's all that has requested to speak.
Okay. I have a comment from a, uh, lady named Melody Ward that I will read, uh, so everybody can see it. Um, she states that Club Euphoria has not engaged the community that is adjacent to and providing a safety plan or attended neighborhood, community meetings to address issues that have resulted with violence, parking, community congestion, et cetera. Club Euphoria has had multiple shootings, one man killed on the premise approximately three years ago. Birmingham Police Department has had to be contacted on numerous occasions to restore order to the community. I'm not opposed to entrepreneurship. However, I do believe that in order for Club Euphoria to remain open, they should have a detailed safety plan for their business in the area where they are directly located. They may possibly seek out information for rental spaces that might be adjacent to the business. Thank you for your time. And then in an additional comment, I'm not sure how Club Euphoria can address the parking, but it is an issue when access to the community entrance, entrances, alleyways, side streets, et cetera, are impeded for residents and emergency vehicles. Again, I'm not opposed to entrepreneurship, especially black businesses, but Club Euphoria needs to establish a concrete safety plan and communicate regularly with the neighborhood association. Uh, at this time, I think we had one is, um, Rose said, gonna be able to speak real quick. Yeah. And so we're going to hear from him really quick. Um, and he will be the last speaker. After that, Birmingham Police, uh, will be available. All right. He's no longer available. So at this time, uh, if our representatives from BPD would like to speak. Is any, do our representatives from Birmingham Police have the ability to speak? Okay. Uh, while we are waiting for their.
Yeah, Counselor Williams, um, I checked, they, um, both of the representatives that I saw that were on the list were unmuted. Um, I, I, you know, I just checked the, the people that are on the call and they were unmuted, so I don't know.
Okay. Um, if the administration wants to reach out to those BPD officers, that'd be great. We'll go ahead and.
So Counselor, Counselor Williams Xavier Pitts is on the line. I see, I see him, I see his name on there, so I don't know if he's having technical difficulties, but we'll do a follow-up to confirm, uh, we'll do a follow-up to find out what the challenge is.
All right. Thanks, Chief Sparks. Um, if I could have screen share, we're going to show a, a video of the actual shooting event that took place. And just as a, um, a, a, a warning for everybody, this event, this, a video is graphic.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious, before you show us this, how long ago was this?
Uh, let's see, when, when Julie, when was the, uh, when was this, when was the shooting incident? Was it the, I don't want to give the, the wrong date. Do you remember the exact?
How long it was and when it was and when was this, and when was this video and what was the proximity to the property? Who was at?
Okay. This is a shoot, this is a shooting event, uh, that occurred recently. This is the homicide that just occurred. Uh, I believe it was, was it fourteen days ago, Julie?
I believe the date on reports were around June thirteenth.
Okay. So June thirteenth and today is June twenty-ninth.
Okay. This happened on the, was this on?
I'm going to correct and excuse, excuse, okay, we're going to continue this hearing without any more interruption.
Mister Williams, Mister Williams, Mister Williams, if I, I know you're in charge of the hearing. I do want to be sure that Mr. Hilliard's questions are addressed because you're entering and providing us with additional information. And so I'd like to know, what is the date and where's the address and the location and proximity to the club before you share this with us? And what's the video? If that would be okay?
Happy to repeat myself. The, uh, it happened June thirteenth, as just stated. This is at the club. Is there any other information about the thirteenth or at the club that we need to clarify?
And the third thing I ask is, what is the source of the video?
It is a Facebook video. And before, before I was interrupted, I was going to give a disclaimer. This video is graphic in the sense that there's, uh, bad language. We've shown videos to the council as a whole that have bad language. So we want to make sure that the, if the public has, uh, is going to be offended by any bad language, to please mute or log off momentarily. All right. Do I have the ability to screen share?
Yes, Counselor, you have the ability to share your screen.
All right.
God damn, bro. Oh, hell no. Oh, hell no. Let's go, y'all. Oh, hell no, let's go, y'all. Well, they already shooting, bro. Oh, he's shooting, bro. He's shooting, bro. Oh, shit. Oh, shit. What they shooting, bro? Oh, no, bro. Yeah.
All right. That is the end of that. Before Birmingham Police has a chance to speak, I want to go over the calls that were made in the last six months to Birmingham Communications. Uh, just a reminder to the council that we typically only consider the events that have happened in the past six months when we're talking about a revocation of a business license. Um, we've had three general alarm calls, one 911 hang-up call, one rape, one robbery, three assaults, six thefts, five weapons offense, two fights, two parking violations, two traffic accidents, one hit-and-run criminal, uh, two calls to assist citizens, seven calls for loud noise, 17 miscellaneous calls, uh, that got dispatched, three medical calls, one unknown call, and one gunshot wound call. Uh, are the representatives from Birmingham Police available to speak?
Counselor, it's what seems Mr. Pitts is still having challenges. We're reaching out to Chief Smith right now to see if we can connect through some other portal. So just a second, sir.
Okay. Um, I also want to confirm with my colleagues that everybody was able to get the actual, uh, information that Mr.... Come on. Can mute whoever that is. If, I want to confirm with my colleagues that they were able to get, um, a, uh, the, all of the police reports, was everybody, were all of the councils able to review those? And just to, um, be explicitly clear, the calls, the calls that I just listed were calls for service. They do not necessarily indicate that a report was made or that was what actually occurred, that is what the call came in through 911 Communications. We did get a list of, and, um, in essence, I'm going to read, I'm not going to read them all unless a counselor did not have the ability to, to download them from the email that Julie gave. But wanted to read, uh, a couple of the, uh, a couple of the calls that have happened in the last couple of months. Uh, one is a sergeant that, uh, responded on April the 18th of this year. Uh, upon their arrival, um, there were, due to the sheer amount of traffic in the area, due to an event at Club Euphoria, cars were lined up on both sides of Long Avenue, being parked halfway in the roadway and halfway on the curb and sidewalk. There were also cars in the 10 block of 15th Street West where you could not get emergency services, uh, fire truck, ambulance, uh, to the area. Cars were cruising the area which extended to the 100 block of 15th Street West as well as the 14th and 1300 blocks of Long Avenue. Um, the sergeant along with several other units were able to make the vehicles leave the area and correct the parking, parking issues. Multiple residents thanked us and were visibly happy at the action taken by our department. Club Euphoria continues to be a nuisance to the residents who live nearby with patrons of the club parking illegally and noise from the music coming from the club. Since January 19th until today's date, which this report was made on April the 18th, 2021, there have been over 50 calls coming from around Club Euphoria, including multiple people shot, even one homicide happening at that location. Obviously, this is before the last homicide that occurred there. Uh, with the issues continually occurring at this venue, uh, the sergeant requests the business license, uh, be rescinded due to the trouble it is causing the law-abiding citizens who live in the area and neighborhood, uh, for that. Dispatch was able to provide a list of calls, uh, including felony assaults, homicide, loud noise, vehicles being broken into, thefts, and many others. And that is from the sergeant over that feat, uh, at West Precinct. Another report from, um, our, uh, Business Compliance and Vice Unit is going to be made on the 17th of April. Members of BPD Vice Narcotics conducted a business check at Club Euphoria at approximately 21:39, uh, which is 9:39. Uh, detectives spoke with, uh, different people that were there, uh, we're not going to list their names out, uh, and were notified them not to exceed the patron capacity, uh, because, or they will be shut down by the fire marshal. When detectives first arrived to do the business check, they saw a security guard loading a pistol and placing it in his pants in an appendix carry position, uh, while, and their detective's name was talking to the owner. Other detectives noticed two people in a truck, uh, parked on the private property loading a rifle. Detectives removed both individuals from the vehicle and spoke with them. They were security for the venue, uh, and, uh, and were just looking and, and stated to the officers that they were just looking at the weapons. There were five rifles and two handguns in the vehicle. The owner of the weapons did not have a pistol permit with him, and due to the vehicle being parked on private property, advised him how to transport the weapons to be in compliance with Alabama state law. Also, from, um, our Business Compliance Unit, uh, at a, um, on 4/13 of 2021, uh, the Business Compliance Unit officers were informed that rapper Honeycomb Crazy, I don't know if that's correct pronunciation, will be at Euphoria on Friday, the 16th of April, and rapper Young Dolph will, will be there on Saturday, the 17th. Um, the detective, the officer was in uniform and a marked, uh, vehicle. Uh, both rappers are well-known and bring large crowds. Uh, one rapper was recently in a shootout the last time he was in Birmingham, and that occurred on, uh, 225B, which I believe is in my district on the east side of Birmingham. He is known for having assault rifles with him. His grandparents were killed in February in a house fire that caused by someone that shot his grandparents' house, and one of the bullets hit an oxygen tank, causing it to explode. Rapper Young Dolph is a big-time artist out of Memphis. There will be an excessive amount of people. Uh, there will possibly be rival gang members in attendance, including, and it's specified as some, uh, specific gangs. These two groups have been shooting at each other for the last three weeks. Um, those are the, that is the gist of the reports, although there are several, and, um, council members can feel free to read them. Uh, are BPD available to speak at this time?
So yes, sir, Counselor, we're going to try two ways. One, we'll see if the unmute works this time, and if not, I have him on my phone. So we'll just play through my phone.
Okay. And is this Levito, who, who, who's speaking?
This should be Officer Pitts.
Officer Pitts, all right.
Let's try Officer Pitts, if you could try unmuted.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So that's through my phone, Counselor. It seems like the, uh, the WebEx isn't working, so I'll just play through my phone.
Okay.
Go ahead, Officer Pitts.
Good morning.
Detective Pitts for Police Departments. Mr. Chairman, we have six calls at this location.
Looks like another technical difficulty. Let's find out what happened, Mr. Chairman, just a second.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, like I said, the last six months, there were 36 calls at this location. The first call started January the 1st, 2021. The last call was June 13th, 2021. And Mr. Chairman, after these 36 calls, there was four persons with a gun. There was four assault calls where four people were shot. There were five theft of property, three loud noise, 11 unknown calls. There was one robbery call, it was carjacking. There were one number, 911 call. There was two very well-known calls. And there were two assist a citizen call. Again, the last six months, January the 1st, 2021, the first call, June 13th, 2021, the last call, to go back a year, September 7th, 2020, to June 13th, 2021, there were total of four day calls.
All right.
Again, Mr. Chairman, the last six months, January the 1st, 2021, to June 13th, 2021, 36 calls were served.
All right. Thank you, Detective. Do we have anybody else from BPD that would like to speak about this?
He read mine.
Okay. Um, do we have members of the council that would like to speak, ask questions, make comments?
Absolutely. Uh, Mr. Williams? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it is, I, I really appreciate all the information we've gotten. I think it's all very important. Uh, I was glad to hear from a couple of the neighborhood officers who, uh, were not in favor of shutting down a business, but giving them an opportunity to, uh, make community relationships. I think, uh, giving them an opportunity to make community relationships, come up with a plan, as we've done with several of other clubs over the next 90 days. I would like to give them an opportunity to do this. As we see, it really feeds to a lot of entrepreneurs. And of course, there's really not a lot of places for people to go. But I think, and what I've heard so far, if the neighborhood, uh, and they're willing, I, I heard several of them say they were willing to work along with them and, uh, and, and the club could do, uh, more communications, uh, come up with a safety plan, I would be in favor of extending that while they get that together. Uh, I think that, uh, it's very important that we give our young people a place to display their talents, their entrepreneurship. All of that has been said and done. So, uh, I would, uh, at the proper time, I would love to, uh, join with my other colleagues, not to shut down to, uh, shut down a business, but give a business a chance to build, a better relationship with the community, a better safety plan, and let's critique that and work along with them. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, that's my, uh, one person's opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, do any other members of the council have any comments, questions? Mr. O'Quinn?
Counselor Williams, I'll, I'll speak after.
Oh. Who else to go first?
Yeah. So I'll, uh, just, I'll be brief. So I, I'm willing to, uh, give these folks some time to, you know, come up with a plan, but, um, I, I think that the council and administration also have some accountability here because, uh, this is not just this club. Um, there are clubs in my district, other people's districts, that, uh, you know, depending on who you talk to, uh, in the surrounding community, you know, they, they have problems. So this is not, uh, one business issue. This is a lot of businesses that are in the entertainment space. Um, some of them even owned by, owned and operated by Birmingham police officers, uh, that have had similar type incidents, um, you know, and we're not talking about them today. Uh, so, um, I, I think there's a, a bigger issue going on here that we need to address that there, um, and you know, you can talk about safety plans all day long. We had a establishment that created a safety plan, um, that lasted about three months, and they were right back to where they were to begin with. And because there was no accountability, there was no enforcement, you know, the, the residents are, are still dealing with that, and that's multiple establishments across the city. So, um, you know, we can give these folks some time to create a safety plan, but if, if, if there's no compliance, if there's nobody whose job it is to get out there and, and make these folks follow their safety plan, if there's no, you know, enforcement, uh, in the surrounding community that is, you know, keeping the, the racing and the other issues that come along with it, um, it, then, you know, we're, we're not really addressing the issue. So, um, I'm, you know, in favor of an extension, but my perspective is that the city of Birmingham needs to figure out how to better, uh, hold these folks accountable, um, and address the issues that happen outside of these establishments that the owners of these establishments, you know, have no control over. So, um, that's just my perspective.
All right. Anybody else?
Uh, yes, Counselor Williams. Um, first of all, I do, um, concur with what my other two colleagues have talked about. I do think this is an opportunity for us to help this club come up with a better security plan. I think they do need to communicate and attend neighborhood meetings. I do agree that there is a bigger issue that we, as the council, as the city, need to deal, deal with, which is the crime. Um, I think they should be allowed time to rehab security and mission and parking issues and work with the neighborhood. And, uh, any violence that occurs in the club in 90 days, there needs to be an automatic shutdown after a hearing. So I still think we need to let them have time. Um, I would suggest that the club honor hire off-duty police to serve neighborhood and the club until it's closing time, and then ask the owner if they can pay for it. But I do think we need to allow them, um, 90 days, and I think that, uh, Birmingham Police needs to vet their security plans as well. But after 90 days, after a new security plan, if nothing else has changed, I do think that we really, really need, need to take a serious look at, um, whether we should allow Euphoria to continue. But as of now, I agree with my two council members that we need to give them another chance.
All right. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I, um, I agree with second chances, but the security plan is not all that needs to be reviewed here. Security is only one part of it. I am always with the residents. The residents, if the residents can't sleep at night, if the residents have people infringing on their quality of life, if the residents are afraid, then this club is clearly a nuisance. Now, whether they can get out of the nuisance status that they're in, I don't know. But, you know, the noise ordinance says that you should not be able to hear the noise 50 feet from its source. I can guarantee you that this noise is being heard more than 50 feet from its source. I imagine that anybody with two ears on their head would be able to tell that that's a problem. It also sounds like this venue is having events that are too large and, and attract too many people for the space that they have. So maybe their location is inappropriate for the kind of events they're trying to attract. A hookah lounge normally does not have... A hookah lounge normally does not have, you know, five hundred people come to hear a rapper. I mean, the last, so that's, that's an issue. So to me, the nuisance that this venue has created is the, is the problem. It's not just a security plan that's going to cure this. They're going to have to look at their noise levels, their parking, and how many people are being attracted to these events? Because if they can't get in, you know, they'll have to find something to do, and they'll probably do it in the neighborhood. So I'm willing to give them a second chance, but they need a total revamp. And maybe they need to look for a bigger location in a commercial area instead of a residential neighborhood. Because the residents of Birmingham, those are the people who've chosen to stay here and live in Birmingham, and I don't want to drive them off, and I don't want their lives to be made miserable in their senior years. And that's not fair to the, to the residents. So the only thing that has crossed my mind with the idea of a second chance is what if another death occurs during our second chance period? How are we going to feel about that? If we give these folks a second chance and another young person dies? I mean, that is something that, you know, each of us have to personally think about. But a security plan for the attorneys who originally spoke is not enough. There's a lot more needed here. Noise, parking, size of events, what kind of people they're having. If you know people attract folks with loads of guns in their cars, and if your security people have to have loads of guns in their, in their vehicles, and they don't even know the legal way to transport them, you know, this place has got lots and lots of problems. Now, it has some good points too, but unfortunately, the good points didn't overcome the fact that people have been shot and are dying, and there are a lot of guns around and noise and all this. So, you know, I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of sitting on the fence because I'm thinking, okay, well, will an extension result in another death? And I'm with Counselor Smith, and if we do grant an extension and one more serious incident occurs, they should be shut down immediately. That's just, all right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I do echo the sentiment of most of the counselors that have already spoken, actually the majority of them. When I go back and I look at the standards that we consider to provide a liquor license, and I look at the list, there's seven standards, and as well as we look at those when we get ready to revocate or to remove a license. Creation of a nuisance, circumstances that are clearly detrimental to public health or safety, traffic congestion, any other types of reasons that pose a risk. Of course, what we've heard from our police officers and issues that have been addressed today, they do fall in some of the lines with this. But we also have heard today about accountability, enforcement, and compliance with ordinances and laws that we already have in place to eliminate nuisances, to increase safety, to eliminate traffic congestion, and to eliminate poses of risk to our residents. Now, when we have businesses that come into our communities, we don't want any one of them to pose a risk to any of our residents or to make any of us unsafe. But we also have a responsibility to ensure that our ordinances are enforced and that our residents or people who don't comply with the laws are compliant with those laws. Is that responsibility on any business owner, each and every business owner that opens a business here in the city? Is that business owner's responsibility? Or is it one that goes back to the people who are in place to enforce and ensure compliance? So I want to go with the majority of what I'm hearing so far in conversations from counselors is that we do allow, when we talk about a safety plan, I am in agreement that club owner or in any business needs to have a safety plan in place that allows customers and residents to feel safe. And so I don't know if we have that in place already, or we need this opportunity to allow that to be created. But I also agree that we have another issue when we look at the root cause, and what is the real problem that's occurring here? Is it one of lack of compliance and enforcement and accountability? And that's what we also need to take in place and consider here. So I would just want us to think of these items as we go forward. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Madam Protem. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
One other comment, you know, another issue that we've had over the years with, you know, clubs with these kind of activities is they're, them taking an inordinate amount of our police force off the street to deal with their issues. You know, you can't have, you know, the entire West Precinct having to police, to do the enforcement portion. You just can't take the whole force to deal with one club or one location. So that is another issue we have to consider is, is the venue causing so much need for enforcement that we're taking people away from the rest of the precinct in order to deal with one entity's issues that they are causing? So that's just one other thing for us to consider, is the resources that the police department has to deal with one venue.
All right. Mr. Hoyt, do you have any comments? How you've been?
Well, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and let me say summarily, you have done a yeoman's job of giving some balance to this, this hearing. And I, I am surprised by some of the comments I've heard from my other colleagues because I don't think if this was in a block of where we live, that we would put up with this one minute, not one minute. I know I wouldn't. And, and I want to say to the veteran counselor, Abbott, you were spot on. And obviously, we think alike on some occasions. And, you know, the issue of crowd control, perpetuating a nuisance, the invasion of, of city property and personal property. And the police has a, has a tenant of protecting and providing safety, and, but also protecting people's property. Now, we've heard, you know, you said, well, you heard from, from some of the officers who suggested that we should, that we should, you know, look at a different approach. But you also heard from several of them to say that they want to shut down because they've been, obviously, they've been inundated by this establishment. And one of the things we have not mentioned, you know, we mentioned about laws and ordinances, but laws and ordinances are written to adhere to. You know, we, we have the legislative body, and majority of what we are talking about, we've written. You know, the council's a continuing body, and so you go, go against your own rules. That's not good. And so then people don't think they have to really adhere to the law if the council doesn't adhere to his own laws. You know, and, and matter of fact, that, that piece of legislation that the Protem read doesn't say it had to be all seven, just it had to be one. And we've heard several with respect to it being a nuisance. If I didn't know any better, I would say this club is on crack, it's out of control. I mean, it really is. And you would think that at some point, we would talk about management. And, you know, when I look at this report, and, and this is summarily report that attorney has provided to us, yeah, here it says seventy-three noise violations. Well, you had seventy-three opportunities to do better, and I, but damn, you didn't do it. Didn't do it because you don't care, you don't live there. And these, this is a mostly senior citizen community. And I'm telling you, they would not subject their seniors to this nowhere. You know, and, and the black, you know, the black community put up with so much, so much. And we don't have a high demand for quality of life in our communities. And we got a majority of black council up here saying it's okay for a club to come in here and, and just interrupt people's retirement. I say shame on the council. And folks have been shot. Nothing gonna change. And, and until somebody else is gonna get killed while y'all waiting ninety days, I agree with the council, that's what's gonna happen. Because it's about, it's about the, I'm gonna talk some colloquial language here today, it's about them Benjamins. That's all these folks are concerned about, is making money. And they don't, they don't care that it's impacting these people's property. We, you, listen, and I know in other communities, I know folk get tired of me talking about Hoover and, and Homewood and, and Mountain Brook, all these places, this mess wouldn't even happen. And I've been on this council long enough that we had a club that the noise was contained in a building, never outside, and we shut it down. We shut it down because the residents complained about it, and we say we were for the residents. I'm for business. I am. You know, I'm, I'm beyond the, the club days, but I used to be a clubber, you know, it was, but I went to have a good time. And I didn't worry about getting shot, I didn't worry about getting my car broke into. I didn't worry about somebody pulling a gun out on me. I didn't worry about nobody carjacking me. This is, I mean, this is, this, this is a clear nuisance. It's, it's out of control. And it's very unfortunate. Because I think this owner, if he was really concerned about where he was and the impact that he's, this negative impact that he's having on this community, then he would have changed some things long before now. And the only reason why you could bring him in and even question him is because we have laws and ordinances that, that are on the book. Otherwise, we, we couldn't call him in for a hearing. And so it's, it's, you know, it's, it's disingenuous of us as a legislative body to say it's okay until they, listen, and most of those homes over there are wood-framed homes, which mean that bullet can go straight through that house. And you telling me that's okay? Well, it's not okay. And I'm, I'm very surprised. But we make allowances for black folk and black businesses that we would never put up with anybody else. That's wrong. And I just, you know, I just believe it need to be shut down and shut it down long enough for him to think about what is he want to do next. That's what I think needs to happen. And Mr. Chairman, I really appreciate all the way you have handled this public hearing. And then as Counselor Abbott has suggested, you know, parking is an issue here. Obviously, he's outgrown where he is. But I don't think parking as an issue is going to go away as long as we allow this person to operate. It's not. Yeah, I remember when Dr. Walker used to have the LR hall, and parking became an issue. Police had to police it every weekend. They had that, and, and Chief Rob at that time talked about the money they had to accounted for the money of, for the officers that, that had to attend and, and control traffic there. Well, this is no different, just not downtown. But we want businesses, and we want club owners. But it has to be a user-friendly business, not one that impedes on one's quality of life. I just don't think we exist as a council to allow that. And would we allow this to happen on the South Side or anywhere else? It is, you know what, it, it saddens me today. I'm very saddened that we say we can go on with this. What, what are we here for? And let me tell you something, it's beyond me. If you don't like me, so what? I ain't come here for you to like me anyway. Came here to do a job, and I'm gonna do it till I die. But when, when the council don't even hold his own self accountable to his own rules and laws, something is amiss. Something is amiss. And listen, we not, this council is a group of intelligent folk, educated folk. Got all kind of degrees. And folks are dying by degrees. And you can, y'all can sit here and be passive if you choose. But I'm not. Because I've served this community for sixteen years, and they've had to endure and endure and endure. And you wouldn't want your mother, your grandmother, your auntie, your uncle, your granddaddy, or anybody else to be subjected to this club if it was in your, if your folk were there. And you can't tell me that you would, and if you did say that you, it would be okay, then I'm gonna check you. Something is wrong with your, with, with your equilibrium. I, I just, you know, I am surprised. And I hope the news cover this back to back because I, I just can't believe that we would sit here and allow this to happen. You know, two people that got killed over there. Folks that got shot, main. Not, not, not down the street, but right there on the property. And then you ask the question, you ask the question, you ask the question, is the video relevant? The video was taken out there, go out there and look at the place. Y'all got them Tahoe, go and, go and look at the place and see if it ain't the same place. And whether it was three years ago, or two years, or two months, or one day, it's the same place that's been a nuisance for three years. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyt. Mr. Quinn, well, does anybody that hasn't spoke yet, would you like to speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Like I said, I, I always come into these things with open mind, really want to hear issues from both sides. You know, I, I think there are some things going on, we're hearing about really parking issue, noise issue. And I really did not get a clear understanding from BPD as to the actual calls, and we got that information late yesterday afternoon. But, you know, I was almost surprised at the level of support that people reached out and called in in support of this venue. I think that I would like to hear some more from BPD about these actual incidents that have happened and hear more about that. That seemed to be a little bit vague as to the specific incidents that happened with the problem. That seemed to be a little bit vague uh, to the specific incidents that happened on the property, but. Uh, in my mind, and at the appropriate time, I would like to delay this item for thirty days. I think that um, in the meantime, I would like to get more detail from BPD. I would like the opportunity to go out and visit the venue. I would like the opportunity to speak to some of the residents uh, in that area. And at the end of that thirty days, um, you know, I'm almost surprised, I think Ms. Rice was the attorney, but. Uh, you know, I, I would have felt like y'all would come to this type of hearing with, with some plans in place. And so I would say at the end of that thirty days, be prepared to talk about solutions to uh, parking, making sure that. There's not litter left in people's yards, making sure that you have uh, addressed any gaps in safety plans and be prepared to discuss that. Uh, you know, so that, so the council can make a fully informed decision. And so that's kind of my stance. Like I said, I, I want the opportunity to actually uh, go out there and hear. Like I've, I've seen, like I said, we got the report, we got a handful of reports. Uh, yesterday, which seems to be a portion of uh, the thirty-six calls. Uh, and then I'm not sure what unknown calls mean, uh, so definitely have some follow-up questions on that, but. I just think we delay this item for thirty days, gather all this information. Uh, I want to go out to that site. I encourage my colleagues to, to, to get more informed about. Some of these issues, because like I said, parking, you blocking streets, if that's what, if that's going on, that's a problem. I mean, you cannot. Uh, you know, you can't say that's not your responsibility if you're bringing people to the area. You know, you have to have a plan in place for that. Uh, you gotta work with the community to develop those things, but. Uh, you know, I don't like making decisions based off second-hand, third-hand information, and honestly, I, I haven't had enough time getting those. Reports on yesterday uh, afternoon to, to really get into that. Uh, and be able to speak back and forth to BPD to, to get a good understanding of, of the incidents and the quantity. Uh, of what's happened and who's at fault, and so. You know, I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but at the appropriate time, I would like to delay this item for thirty days.
All right, Mr. Quinn, did you have another comment?
Yes, and I'll just start by seconding Counselor Wood's motion. Um, but. I do want to make it clear that I don't have any hesitation to. Uh, withdraw a liquor license from uh, a, a business or shut a business down. Uh, when it's a public nuisance, but if we're gonna use that standard. Then there are a bunch of places across the city of Birmingham. That I could start naming names, and, and they haven't just been around for a minute. They've been nuisances, designated nuisances for a long time by the residents in the surrounding community. You know, there's an issue of fairness here. Within the past two weeks, Five Points South was shot up by patrons of a club in Five Points South. So why aren't we talking about pulling their business license this morning? Um, you know, this, what, what, so again, I don't have any problem shutting a business down. But there is a bigger issue going on here than just this one club. There has to be, you know, compliance put in place with these safety plans. Um, and there, we have to do better, you know, we have to figure out how to. Uh, provide enforcement around these venues, you know? Maybe we need to consider some uh, new revenue source uh, to cover the cost of providing. Uh, law enforcement around these venues. I don't know, but um. Again, I just want to make it clear, I don't have any problem shutting down an establishment that has become a nuisance to the surrounding community. But we do have to be fair. And there's a lot of these uh, types of venues that fit that description.
All right, Mr. Hilliard.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, to my colleagues, uh, Clinton and O'Quinn, I, I want to say to you, I think. You both have good points, but in all fairness, let's give them the same uh, leverage that we gave the others a ninety days. So they'll have a chance to put together their plan. We can go out and tour the place. I've already planned to do that. Let's do the same thing that we did with all of the others. We, we didn't give them thirty days. We gave them ninety days to get their plans in order. To start working towards building a better relationship with the community and present us with a, a detailed plan. That's what was done in every, uh, in all the other cases. Let's continue to flow that, and I'm in favor, and I would like to offer a motion at the proper time to give them the same ninety days that we gave everybody else. And get them, let them have time enough to put together a plan and not rush it in thirty days.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hilliard. Um, seeing nobody else, I'm gonna make a couple. Uh, who was that?
Just, just, it's Hoyt.
Mr. Hoyt.
Just, just one last comment. Well, and, and, and let me uh. Say how important. It is that we do the right thing, but I want to uh, also make sure that we understand I have been consistent. I have not wavered. And if you serve with me, you know that about me. And I don't care who it is. If it was my uncle, my momma would run a club, and it was causing this kind of havoc on the community. I tell her she had to shut it down. Now, that's the operating. And I don't care who it is, how well I know. I got friends who are turning, when they came full to the hall, they understood. I'm a man of conviction, and that's where I'm gonna be. And if I had known Dr. uh, O'Quinn uh, about these incidents, I don't hear everything. But I'm not the patron council for the South Side. But if it ever brought to my attention, I would have brought it to you all. Just as I did with King's Mark and, and other things that are happening in my district, I brought it to the council. And so we can. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyt. I appreciate it. Every, everyone's spoken on this. Uh, just a couple of quick things. I think, you know. We can read the room and see, see where the, where the vote is, but um, a couple of things I want to clarify. Um, but before I do, I want um, zoning to be able to speak to what the parking requirements are in fairness to the applicant. So they will understand what the parking requirements are. Is uh, is a member of zoning on that could speak to that?
Good morning, Ms. Brundage, uh, zoning. Yes, so their parking requirement, they're required to have a total of thirty parking spaces. And that is thirty parking spaces on the property. That is where the use is occurring. Uh, at the time that I inspected and a site plan was submitted by the applicant stating that showing where they have the thirty parking spaces. And the thirty parking spaces were inspected, have been marked and striped, and. They just, at this point, they probably just need to utilize those thirty parking spaces that they have on site.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brundage. I appreciate it. Um, real quick, before we uh, hear a motion, and it sounds like we have a lot of. Similar motions that have been thought about being presented. It is, some comments there were made, I want to clarify, when it is absolutely the responsibility of the owner. Uh, of a club, of the person that is putting on event, whether they be a promoter. Um, or it, or anything else uh, to ensure the safety of the public. Uh, if they are putting forth an atmosphere where the public is at danger. Um, then the city has absolutely the right to revoke that business license, which will obviously end up in revocation of their liquor license. I uh, I want to say thank you to Birmingham Police. Um, I have read all of the reports that they have done out there. Um, they have spent a tremendous amount of time and resources in all different divisions of BPD. Being out there and putting together these reports for us to consider. Um, I don't know if everyone read all of the reports or not, but from all of the narratives that were sent to us. Um, it is pretty clear what's going on at that location and what the uh, what the neighbors are having to endure. That live in that neighborhood. So I, you know, I know sometimes Birmingham Police, you know, it's frustrating. When you have spent so much time and investigative resources putting together these reports. Uh, for the council to go a different direction, but please continue to do so because. Your reports are really the only official documentation that we as a council have to go off of. So thank you for your time. Thank you for answering um, the hundreds of calls you've answered at this location over the past. Uh, the past uh, couple of years. And um, also another point, you know, if there's a club where we've had two homicides and multiple shootings over the past two years. Um, yeah, I do believe in equity. Please send it forward to my committee. We will see them immedi-, you know, we will, without any haste, have that for the full council. If we've had any location where there's been two homicides, multiple shootings, and hundreds of calls, but uh, for service by BPD, please send to my committee. Because we will not hesitate at all in hearing that as a body of the council. But, but one thing I want to say with where the vote looks like it's gonna go, I encourage a, a comment that my colleague, Crystal Smitherman. Uh, made where we have a ninety-day period, and we've done this before, and I don't remember if everybody on this council was on the council when we did it, but. Uh, with another club in Birmingham where we had a uh, thirty, a ninety-day period where they, where they got the safety plan and they reported. Every thirty days to the Public Safety Committee. To make sure that there were no critical incidents um, during that ninety-day probationary period. And then they came back before the council again after that ninety days with their new safety plan. Um, I hope that that's, um, I hope a similar, you know, delaying it doesn't do anything really other than just simply, you know, delaying it. I hope that we can um, as a body, at least as a minimum, have, have that uh, period where there is a. Where there's work with the owner, with the neighborhood, with the council, uh, with the different city departments, whether it be zoning or whatever. Um, to make sure that they're in compliance. So at this time, I'm willing to entertain a motion.
Mr. President, before you do that, I mean, Mr. Chairman. Go, go ahead. I, I acquiesce to uh.
Ms. Abbott.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask one question. It would be from the, of the Law Department. I wanted to ask if the City Council gives a ninety-day um. Window of opportunity to this uh, club to come up with some plans to deal with all of their issues. Is there any liability to the city if another. Unfortunate loss of life or, or severe injury occurs? Is there, are we in any way in danger of being liable? If there are more incidents, serious incidents? I would like to know from the Law Department, the Office of the City Attorney.
Attorney Bernard, speak to what the council has done in the past and address Counselor Abbott's concern and question.
Okay, um, thank you. I mean, it may be, it's summer for a question, maybe something that may be better dealt with in executive session. I don't know, you know, as far as what the. The city's liability is. I mean, the council has taken different courses of action. Sometimes they have revoked licenses. Sometimes they have given um, some time. Um, for somebody to come back with a different plan. Um, you know, that's, that's the discretion of the council. Uh, generally, in this type of uh, situation, the council is acting in quasi-judicial capacity. And uh, you know, council generally has legislative immunity, and there's also judicial immunity for people who are, you know, for boards that are acting quasi. Judicial capacity on, you know, as far as, you know, speaking to. Liability of the city, a lot of that depends on the facts and exactly, you know, what happens, and, and some of that would probably be better addressed in executive session.
All right, Ms. Abbott, do you, would you like to go into executive session, or are you happy with what you heard?
No, I, I think I know where I'm going now. Thank you.
All right, so.
I, I had a, you know, I acquiesce.
Oh, yeah, 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 Mr. Hoyt, Mr. Hoyt.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, let me also suggest this. You've heard that majority of the residents are senior citizens. Which means that. A goodly portion have not appeared here today. Because they may feel some sense of intimidation. And we have a responsibility. To protect the citizens. Against any uh, any entity that uh, that would cause harm to property, to quality of life. And, and, and this is what we're dealing with here. And we have seen this council revoke license immediately. I've seen them give ninety days, but none, none that I have seen to give ninety days when there's somebody been killed. Or there's been someone who uh, you know, been shot in the place, you know, but that hadn't happened. Now, it was a, it was a new uh, noise issue. Yes, that did happen. That, that did happen uh, in those cases. I've been here long enough to, to have seen all the iterations, but uh, but again. Thank you for how you handled this, and I just hope that this council makes the right decision. And I, I'm not gonna vote for no ninety-day period. These folk been dealing with this for three years, and you want to go back and deal with something for ninety days? So there's not ninety days, uh, three years and ninety days, I suspect. They're gonna have to endure.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyt. All right, can we, do, do we have a member of the council that would like to make a motion?
Here, yes.
Counsel, Counsel Williams, proud of the motion. Can I make a note to you that uh, we deal in the uh, form of weeks, so just taking consideration thirteen weeks is ninety-one days, and fourteen weeks is ninety-eight days.
So noted, Mr. Clark.
You have a motion for already?
I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, uh.
Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I have my hand up after Councilman Hoyt.
Mr. Hilliard.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we move for thirteen weeks uh, to give the occupants the time to present a uh, a plan, a safety plan. And uh, give us time to review this in that length of time.
Okay, uh, can I make a friendly amendment to that motion that we give them the thirteen weeks? Uh, with reporting to the council's Public Safety Committee every four weeks. Um, along with during that thirteen-week probationary period, uh, that there cannot be. Uh, any incidents of violence. If there is, then that it will go before the full council for revocation. Are you okay with that, Mr.?
Well, I'm okay with the, with the same. I want the same type of agreements we've given to everybody else that's come before here in the ninety days. That's what I'm asking for.
So that's, that's gonna be the same as we gave the previous club that was given ninety days?
The same as the previous club that we gave nine. I don't want it veer. I want us to stay on track. Give them the same ninety days without, and if we didn't get the others any preconditions, I don't want to give them any precondition. I want us to stick to the program.
Okay, so that's what we did. So are you cool with what we did?
We did that. If we did that, that's fine. If we didn't do that, that I, I'm not for it. Uh, uh, whoever can tell us that, I, I want to stick. Uh, Mr. Clerk, uh, I think you, you, you were, uh, you were there. Uh, I want to stick to the same type of agreement we had with the, uh, last clubs that we gave ninety days to.
Uh, uh, Mr. Clerk, I want to withdraw my motion, and then I think uh, Counselor Hilliard, if you can clarify and remake your motion so it's clear.
Okay, I, I move that we've uh, that we give them thirteen weeks, which is ninety days, uh, to report back to the council. And that uh, I, I will accept the part from uh, Councilman Hunter uh, on the fact that they report every four weeks back to his committee, but that's it.
Second.
All right, Mr. Clerk, I think we're ready for the vote on that.
Councilmember Abbott.
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
No.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Hilliard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Hell, no.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman. Councilmember Williams.
No.
Councilmember Woods.
Yeah.
Council President Protim Alexander.
Yes.
Council President Parker.
Yes.
All right.
All right, uh, motion passes, uh, made by Mr. Hilliard. All right, back to you, President Parker.
All right, thank you, um, real quick, don't know, uh, if you all want to take a two-minute break, and then we come back in and call up, um, I guess some of the budget items. I know we were scheduled for a committee to hold that was at ten o'clock, but of course, we breezed through that. So y'all want to take a two-minute break, and then we come back and, um, we'll call up, uh, some of the budgetary items, or y'all just want to get started, and you just, you, you just kind of, if you need to, you know, step out for a moment, you can, so how do y'all want to do it, which?
We have a five-minute recess, or I move for a five-minute recess.
Okay, all right, Ms., okay, all righty.
All in favor, let me know, I'm saying, uh.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Call of the chair.
Uh, yeah, within five minutes, yeah, okay, all right, so-